Meeting of the Westwood Select Board. Good evening, everyone. Pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, on March 29, 2023, Governor Moore Healy signed into law an act making appropriations for the fiscal year 2023 to provide for supplementing certain existing appropriations and for certain other activities and projects. This act includes an extension until March 31, 2025, of the remote meeting provisions. This December 4, 2023 Select Board meeting will be conducted via remote participation by the board. I hereby grant permission to Westwood Media Center to record the meeting and to anyone else who wishes to record the meeting. So once again, good evening and welcome, everyone. I am Mary Ann LeBlanc Cummings, Chair of the Select Board. I am joined by my colleagues Rob Gotti and Joe Privatara. We are also joined by Christopher Coleman, our Town Administrator, by Molly Keane, our Assistant Town Administrator and Director of Human Resources, by Stephanie McManus, our Assistant Town Administrator and Director of Finance, by Pat Ahern, our Town Council, by Tish Healy, Executive Assistant to the Town Administrator. And with us, we have Alex Portillo from Westwood Media Center, recording this meeting. Thank you, as always, Alex. And with that, I will move right into the Chairs' updates. Toys for Tots. The Westwood Public Safety Communications Center has partnered with the Westwood Fire Department and the Westwood Police Department to collect toys for the Marine Foundation Toys for Tots program. They are requesting donations of new and unwrapped toys to be dropped off now through December 15 at the police station, the main fire station, or at the Islington Fire Station. So please consider making a donation to that wonderful program. And secondly, this is a reminder that the townwide overnight street parking ban is now in effect until March 31, 2024. The overnight parking ban is in place to ensure that snowplows can efficiently clear roadways and also so that emergency vehicles can quickly reach their destinations. Violators are subject to ticketing and towing. With that, I will turn it over to Chris for the Town Administrator's update. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one update for the Board and for the community. After communication with Chief Decker, as I am informing the town officially, that Chief Decker has decided not to seek a renewal of his employment contract. His employment contract expires on June 30 of 24. And again, he has decided not to seek the renewal of that employment contract. We will be working over the coming weeks to develop a transition plan to find his replacement. But and also at this time, I would certainly like to thank the chief for his dedicated years of service to the town of Westwood and to the Westwood Fire Department. We will certainly have more on this later, but I just wanted to make sure I provide that to the to the Board and the community this time.
Thank you, Chris. And I would also like to thank the chief for his service to Westwood. With that, we will move to scheduled actions. The first of which is a joint meeting with the Planning Board to discuss the reappointment of a Planning Board Associate Member. With us, we have, we are joined by Nora Lockne, our Director of Community and Economic Development. Hi, Nora. We are joined by Elijah Romulus, our Town Planner. Good evening. And our Planning Board is coming in. Madam Chair, Ellen Rawlings, good evening. And I see we've got Phil Giordano. Hi, Phil. And I think we're waiting for some other folks to come in.
Yes, we should be joined by Chris and Josh as well.
Chris Path is with us. Hi, Chris.
I'm Mary Ann.
I do not see Josh or Anne's. And I don't see Kate Winn either.
Kate did alert us that she would not be able to make it this evening. I'm not sure about Josh.
Excuse me, Nora and Elijah. Is Amanda joining you?
Not this evening.
I believe Amanda's not.
Oh, actually, no, she is. Sorry.
Welcome, Amanda. Can we proceed with the three members?
Yes, we have a quorum with three.
Okay, terrific. So just by way of background for this joint meeting, the Town's Charter allows for the appointment of up to two associate members to serve on the Planning Board. The associate members can be designated by the Planning Board Chair to sit on the Board in the case of absence, inability to act, or conflict of interest on the part of any elected member of the Board, or in the event of a vacancy. Per the Town's Charter, associate members are appointed to three-year terms by a majority vote of the attending members of the Planning Board and the Select Board. The Charter calls for the associate members to be appointed for three-year rotating terms. In November of 2021, Steve Olunoff, who is with us, I thought I saw him. There you are, Steve. Hi, Steve. Steve Olunoff was appointed to a two-year term, a staggered term, on the Planning Board, and that term expired in November of 2023. He is being recommended tonight by the Planning Board to be reappointed to a new three-year term. So what I would propose as process here, Ellen, as Chair of the Planning Board, I would ask that you please call your meeting to order, do your roll call, and then make your recommendation, a motion with a second, and then we'll have some discussion on that. Does that work for you?
That's perfect. All right, so we do have a quorum. So I will open the Planning Board meeting with a roll call vote. Chris Path?
Here.
Phil Giordano?
I'm here.
And I, Ellen Rawlings, am here. Okay, so at our last Planning Board meeting, we, the Board, was all present, and we unanimously voted to recommend that Steve Olunoff be reappointed for another three-year term as an Associate Planning Board Member.
And will someone be making that motion?
I hereby move to reappoint Steve Olunoff as an Associate Planning Board Member for another three-year term.
Second.
Now, I think we should have a discussion, if there is any discussion. Oh, Rob, I see your hand is up.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Just a quick question. Was Steve the only one expressing an interest? Just I'm curious as to, you know, certainly, it's a wonderful benefit to have somebody with his 30-odd years' experience on the Planning Board in various roles as someone on the bench, should somebody not be there. But do you, had you guys ever tried to bring someone in into associate capacity to learn the ropes so that we're not bringing someone in who is, you know, learning it on the job, if you will? So I just didn't know how that was handled from a process standpoint.
So when we first start having associate members, we look to former members of the Planning Board, Steve Vravsky and Steve Olunoff, to fill those positions with the idea that we want someone who could hit the ground running when they're called upon. The associate member position is only used when necessary for a special permit, where we don't expect to have all five Planning Board members reviewing the application. So we're always looking for a member who had already served as a Planning Board Member. It's a little different than, say, the Conservation Commission, where the associate member is learning the ropes so that they can become a full-time member. It's just the opposite. For a Planning Board, the associate member is, has been to date a former member who knows how special permit processes work and can just step in for a single application when needed. So Steve Vravsky and Steve Olunoff are the original appointed associate members, and we have not received any expression of interest from any other former member to take on this role, but neither have we asked anyone else. So since Steve was interested in being reappointed, we just took that recommendation to the Planning Board.
Both Steve certainly have plenty of experience to meet that requirement. So that was my, that was my question from just a process standpoint. Is Steve Vravsky, do we still have two associate members? Is Steve?
Yes, and Steve has, Steve was last appointed to a three-year term ending in 2024. So he has one more year, yeah, next November.
Thank you, Nora.
Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, Ellen, I would propose that you take the role of the vote of the Planning Board, and then we'll do the same on the Select Board.
Okay, so we have the motion and the second to reappoint Steve Olunoff as an Associate Member of the Planning Board for another three-year term. Was there any further discussion amongst Board members for the Planning Board? Seeing none, I will take a roll call vote. Phil?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Steve, thank you very much for being willing to continue on. We are grateful for your service.
And the Select Board will now vote as well. We're voting on the same motion. So another motion need not be made. So I will call the roll, starting with Joe.
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Congratulations, Steve, and thank you for your long service to Planning Board and the town. And and thank you to all our Planning Board members for joining us and for all of your significant service to the town. Lots of late meetings for you. And with that, I know that you need to close your meeting, Ellen, so I will turn that over to you.
Thank you. With our business being done, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Chris?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You as well.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. All right, moving on with our scheduled action. Next, we have a review of a change of officer requests from the Norfolk Golf Club. And with us on that is Nora Lockne.
You, I think Ed McNally is also joining to discuss this application. So this is something you receive annually when the Norfolk Golf Club officers change their slate. And this year, I believe there are two new directors that have been appointed. Michael Palito and Mark Clayman are new directors for the Norfolk Golf Club. I believe they replaced Christopher Collins and Rich Hunter. So Ed, if you have anything else that you wanted to add there? I believe you're muted, Ed.
Is he in? I saw he had his hand up in the, in the attendees, but I didn't see that he was admitted.
He's on the screen as a presenter.
But he's muted.
No, listen. He's muted.
Ed, if you can unmute, otherwise, if you have nothing to add, then...
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I apologize for that. My Zoom skills are a little rusty. We, yeah, we do go through this every year, as the Board knows. We do have a couple of changes each year. And this year, we have two members who are, who are leaving and being replaced, and the officers remain intact. So I would ask the Board to, to allow us to change our officers, our members.
Thank you, Mr. McNally, and thank you, Nora. Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
No.
If hearing none, then I will entertain a motion.
All right, I move the Select Board approve the change of officers' application for Norfolk Golf Club for the 2024 license year pending Alcohol Beverage Commission Control approval and for the electronic signatures of Select Board to be affixed to the ABCC Licensing Authority Certification Form.
I'll second that.
Roll call, Joe?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Thank you very much, Mr. McNally. And thank you, Nora.
Thank you for hearing us. And we do have one other item on the agenda as well. We have a Mother's Day brunch.
Right. Any problem taking that out of order?
I'm sorry.
I'm seeing the Town Council say no. So why don't we move to that, which is the Mother's Day brunch request for an extension of hours on the liquor license? Nora, did you want to give us the background with Mr. McNally?
Yes, so this application actually relates to the license renewal that you'll be hearing after this. And if the Board grants a renewal of the Norfolk Golf Club's alcohol license for 2024, the Norfolk Golf Club would like to request extra hours for their Mother's Day brunch, which is on May 12, and they'd like to begin service at 10:00 a.m. on that date.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns from my colleagues? If not, I will entertain a motion.
All right, I move the Select Board grant permission to Norfolk Golf Club for an extension of alcohol service to begin at 10:00 a.m. on May 12, 2024, for their annual Mother's Day brunch, obviously contingent upon the renewal of their license in our subsequent discussion here.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, Joe?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Thank you again, Mr. McNally. Thank you, Nora.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, so we will now move into our public hearing on our 2024 license renewals. So I will entertain a motion to open that public hearing.
I move the Select Board open the December 4, 2023 Public Hearing for 2024 License Renewals.
I'll second the motion.
Perfect. We don't need to actually vote on that motion, right, Pat? It's just motion to open. We do? All right, roll call. Joe?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. This public hearing is now open, and I will turn this over to Nora. Once again, thank you, Nora.
Thank you. So we have all of our licenses that are up for review, and I can, I can go through them one at a time. In past years, the Board has grouped them and taken motions for individual groups of licenses. So if you'd like to do that again, we could begin with the Common Vitler CV licenses. You have a list of 28 licenses there. Four of them are new. Birdie's Creative Creamery, BB's Cafe and Bakery, Birdie's Hot Chicken, Bubbling Brook, Blue Orchid Restaurant, Chipotle's, Dunkin' Donuts on 400 Washington Street, Dunkin' Donuts 915 High Street, Dunkin' Donuts 115 Providence Highway, Dunkin' Donuts 208 Providence Highway, Islington Pizza and Sub, Lifetime Bistro, Lifetime Cafe, Muffin House Cafe, Neroli Macato, Next Dine Cafe, Panda Express, Panera Bread, Playables, Pokey Brothers, Sebastian's, Starbucks Coffee, University Avenue, Starbucks Coffee, High Street, Target, Tastefully Done Restaurant and Catering, Westwood Jade, Westwood Pizza, and Wegmans. Of all of those licenses, they have all been granted previously, and there's a request for them all to be renewed to 2024. In the case of Bubbling Brook and Lifetime Bistro, it's requested that those renewals are issued pending their spring inspections. Those are seasonal restaurants only.
Nora, in terms of a motion, would you like those two held separately or just noted separately?
So you can, you can just note that for those two, you're, actually, you know what you could even do? You could just say that they, if you can move that you're recommending, that you're approving the CV licenses for all the establishments subject to all necessary inspections. You can do it that way. And those are the two that have necessary springtime inspections.
Madam Chair, you, you good with me to make a motion? Or would you like to just hear any discussion first?
I'd like to hear discussion first, and then we do need to have public comment before we vote. So I think perhaps we should discuss them each as a group and then open it up for public comment and then vote by group. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Madam Chairman, one of the things we've done procedurally in the past is, as Nora reads the list, if anyone has a question about an individual license, much like the budget discussion at Town Meeting, someone will ask for a hold on something. So as we move through the list, I would recommend you consider doing that.
Okay, well, I, I agree, that is a good idea. But to save the voting until the end, Pat, and do it all... Yes, so certainly encourage folks, if you have a concern, you know, please put that in the Q and A so that we can revisit that once we get to the public comment. So we'll, any discussion on that group of the CV licenses from my colleagues?
No.
No, nothing from me either.
All right, the next group is very short. It's mobile food truck licenses. And we have one that was issued to Paul's Canteen. They're operating out of Stoughton. And they were granted a license for the first time in 2023 and would like to renew for 2024.
And this is the, the food truck that's primarily servicing the construction crew at Pine Hill?
Right now, it's at Pine Hill, yes.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? No. I think we're good to move on?
All right, next, we have the Section 12 All Premise Alcohol and CV License. These are for all, I'm sorry, on-premise CV license and alcohol license. These are for all alcohol sales. We have nine establishments, one of which is new. We have Anthony's Cold-Fired Pizza, Barcino, Casa Loca, Courtyard Boston, Dedham Westwood Hotel, Del Frisco's Grill, Neroli Restaurante, Norfolk Golf Club, Not Your Average Joe's, and Wild Blossom. And of those, the only one that does not currently have an issued license is Barcino. The Board approved a license for 2023 but is still pending ABCC approval. So if you motion to approve this group of nine licenses, in this case, I would suggest you call out Barcino separately and make their approval subject to the ABCC approval of the 2023 license before you extend the 2024.
So Nora, thank you, Nora.
Thank you, Nora. Any questions or comments?
Nora, any, any concern with any issues with any of these establishments?
No, no recent issues.
Great.
All right, then we have two Section 12 On-Premise Wine and Malt Beverage Licenses. One is for Carmella's and one is for the Toast Office.
Any questions or concerns?
No.
Any concerns you have, Nora, with those two?
No concerns. All right, the next category is Section 15 Off-Premise Sales of Wine and Malt Beverages. We have five establishments: Lambert's Rainbow Fruit, Neroli Macato, Pollard's Test Kitchen, Wegmans, and Roach Brothers Supermarket. And just as a refresher, Pollard's Test Kitchen is the former High Street Market. We had one additional business, Smash Burgers, that previously had a Section 15 license. I'm sorry, they were, they were in a, sorry, that was Section Nine. They previously had a Section 12 Wine and Malt Beverages on premises and chose not to review, renew. So we have five Sections 15 Off-Premise Wine and Malt Beverage Licenses.
Any concerns with any of those, Nora?
None.
Any questions or concerns from my colleagues?
None here.
Right, and then moving on to entertainment licenses. We have 12 restaurants with entertainment licenses. Anthony's Cold-Fired Pizza, Barcino, Casa Loca, Carmella's, Courtyard Boston, Dedham Westwood Hotel, Del Frisco's Grill, Neroli Restaurante, Not Your Average Joe's, Smash Burger, Toast Office, Wegmans, and Wild Blossom. Actually, with Smash Burger, I see that Karen has that on the list, but I don't believe they need an entertainment license if they've given up their alcohol license. So we don't require entertainment licenses when it's just a CV license. The entertainment licenses are only required for alcohol sales. So I would strike Smash Burgers from that list.
Any concerns with any of these, Nora?
No, there are no concerns.
Questions or comments from my colleagues?
Nope.
I think we're good to move on, Nora?
As I look at that, I want to go back for one second to Common Vitler licenses because I don't see Smash Burger on the list of establishments that need CV licenses. I believe they gave up their alcohol license. I guess we'll hold off on that because I don't know for sure. I'll have to check with Karen Flynn on that. If, I assume Smash Burger's renewing their CV and just not their alcohol. But while we're reviewing, I will, I will text and see if I can get an answer from Karen on that.
When it comes to the motions, just keep me honest on, on the ons and the offs of the list.
I will do that.
Thank you.
All right, the next category is taxi company licenses. We have three. We previously had four. One of them has chosen not to renew. So the three renewing are American Taxi, Norfolk Town Taxi, and Maurice Cab. And of those, American Taxi still needs its public safety inspection.
Any concerns other than, than that? Not that that's a concern, just a process issue, Nora?
Yeah, no, no concerns.
Any questions?
Apparently, just get back to me and said Smash Burger does need a CV license. So when we get back to the motions, I'll make sure that's included in there.
Thank you. One question on this one. With respect to these taxi companies getting licensed, how does, how do, you know, like Lyft and Uber operate? And is this a competitive disadvantage for a local taxi company relative to cost of license?
I believe it is. Uber, Lyft, rideshare organizations are not licensed entities. The state does not have the licensing program that applies to them. So there is some competitive disadvantage there, which may be one of the reasons why we now only have three taxi companies operating out of Westwood.
Thank you.
Then we have, next category is livery license. We have one for Boston Carriage.
Any concerns, Nora?
None. Under the category of junk dealer license, we have one, Dollar Baney Jewelers.
Any concerns there?
No concerns.
Yeah.
Moving on, unattended donation containers. We have four licenses. One of them, we used to have First Baptist Church. They have decided not to renew their license. So the four we have are Bay State Books located at 60 Manhattan Street by the Senior Center parking lot, Bay State Textiles at 7 Clavertree Street, Temple Beth David, Westwood Lions Club has an eyeglass collection box at 738 High Street, and Windward Trading LLC also has a box at the Senior Center, 60 Manhattan Street. And we have no concerns with any of those. And then the final category is Class 1 Auto Dealer Licenses. We used to have a Class 2 as well. They chose not to renew. The Class 1 Auto Dealer Licenses are Audi Westwood, Porsche Westwood, Mercedes-Benz of Westwood, Ira Acura Westwood, Ira Mazda, and Aston Martin of Boston. Aston Martin took the place of Highline, which was our former Class 2 license holder. And I have no concerns with any of those applicants. So that is the complete list of establishments seeking license renewals for 2024.
Well done, Nora. Thank you. Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
No.
Hearing none, I will open this up for public comment. I do not see that anyone flagged anything as we went through that list, but we'll just give it another moment in case anyone has a comment on this. I'm not seeing any public comment.
All right, I'm gonna take a big sip of water because I've got a lot of...
Yes.
All right, I move the Select... All right, I moved the select board approve the twenty twenty-four common victor licenses for the following. Birdie's Creative Creamery, BB's Cafe and Bakery, Birdie's Hot Chicken, Bubbling Brook, pending their twenty-four, spring twenty-four inspections, Blue Orchid Restaurant, Chipotle's, Dunkin' Donuts, D B A Coffee Grinder Donuts, Dunkin' Donuts High Street Donuts, Dunkin' Donuts Medway Donuts, Dunkin' Donuts Westwood Donuts, Islington Pizza and Sub, Lifetime Bistro, pending their twen- spring twenty-four inspections, Lifetime Cafe, Muffin House Cafe, Neroli Mercato, Nexttime Cafe, Panda Express, Panera Bread, Playables, Poki Brothers, Sebastian's, Starbucks at University Avenue, Starbucks at High Street, Target, Tastefully Done Restaurant and Catering, Westwood Jade Pizza, the Westwood Jade, Westwood Pizza, Wegmans and Smash Burger, right? I got that right, Nora, by including them?
Yes, you got them all right.
Excellent.
I'll second that.
Nora, point of order, do you want to include Smash Mouth Burger in? And if they don't want it, they can refuse the license?
They do want it. So Karen Karen Flynn confirmed by text, they are they are applying for renewal. They were left off the list, but they are applying for renewal.
So would that be the twenty-ninth?
That would be the twenty-ninth. Yeah, I included them in the in the motion, Pat.
Thank you.
Hey, that motion was made and seconded. Uh, so roll call vote, Joe.
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
All right, next up, I vote uh moved that the select board approved the twenty twenty-four mobile food truck license for Paul's Canteen.
Second.
Roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
Next, I move the select board approve the twenty twenty-four section twelve on premise all alcohol common victor's license for Anthony's Cold Fired Pizza, Barcino, pending their A B C C approval of the original twenty twenty-three application and all of their final public safety inspections. Casaloka, Courtyard Boston Dedham Westwood, Del Frisco's Grill, Neroli, Norfolk Golf Club, Not Your Average Joe's and Wild Blossom.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
Next, I move the select board to approve the twenty twenty-four section twelve on premise wine and malt common victor's license for Camella's and the Toast Office.
Second.
Roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
Next, I move the select board approve the twenty twenty-four section fifteen off premise wine and malt licenses for Lambert's Rainbow Fruit, Neroli Mercato, Pollard's Test Kitchen, Wegmans and Roach Brothers Supermarket.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
Next, I move the select board approve the twenty twenty-four entertainment licenses for the following. Anthony's Cold File Pe- Cold Fired Pizza, Barcino, pending their A B C C approval and the uh public safety inspections, Casaloka, Camella's, Courtyard Boston Dedham Westwood, Del Frisco's, Neroli, Not Your Average Joe's, The Toast Office, Wegmans and Wild Blossom.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
All right, next up, I moved that the, was there a question?
Yes, before you move on to the uh next group of licenses, I did have a question for Pat. Pat, Toast Office had a outdoor seating area that was permitted under the extension of the state outdoor seating regulations. And back in April, the board granted a further extension through April first twenty twenty-four, which is the last date that you're allowed to have out temporary outdoor seating under the state um regulations. Does that need to be reconfirmed with a license renewal or does that stand from the last vote last day?
I think it stands from the last vote, and I think you'll see legislation to extend it again this summer.
Okay.
I'd be shocked if if not, yep.
Okay, sorry to interrupt, Rob. Go ahead with.
Oh, that's all right. All right, next we've got the approval of the twenty twenty-four taxi company licenses. So I move the select board approve the following licenses. American Taxi, pending their inspections, Norfolk Town Taxi and Maurice Cab.
Second.
Roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
Next up, I say I would move the select board to approve the twenty twenty-four livery license for Boston Carriage.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
All right, I'd like to make a motion for the select board to approve the twenty twenty-four junk dealer license for Donald Benny Ju- Jewelers.
Second.
Roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
Like to make a motion for the select board to approve the twenty twenty-four unattended donation containers licenses for Bay State Books, Bay State Textiles, Westwood Lions Club and Winward Trading LLC.
Second.
Roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
Okay, I moved that the select board approved the twenty twenty-four class one auto dealer licenses for Audi Westwood, Porsche Westwood, Mercedes-Benz of Westwood, Ira Ira Acura of Westwood, Ira Mazda, Aston Martin Boston.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
And finally, I move the select board approve the aforementioned twenty twenty-four licenses subject to public safety inspections and for the electronic signatures of select board to be affixed to the twenty twenty-four Alcohol Beverage Control Commission Licensing Authority certification forms. In addition, for the select board to include the twenty twenty-four license renewal list in the minutes of the December fourth twenty twenty-three select board meeting.
I'll second the motion with the condition that Rob get a round of applause for reading all of those.
Thank you, Joe.
Roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
Rob, I hate to do this to you, but you you might as well take make the motion to extend the outdoor seating to even though I said you don't need to, you might as well make the motion to make sure that you extend the outdoor seating.
Toast Office only, and it would be extended till April first twenty twenty-four. BB's no longer needs it because BB's obtained a planning board approval for permanent outdoor seating. Kiara was the other holder of an outdoor seating approval and they are, they no longer.
No longer.
Right. All right, so I move the select board approve a temporary outdoor seating extension for the Toast Office through April first of twenty twenty-four per the Act Making Appropriations for Fiscal Year twenty twenty-three that was signed into law on March twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-three.
And I expect that we will be back at some point in time in the future to extend that to next summer. I I'm hopeful.
Very good.
I'll second that, Marian.
Roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
I suppose. And finally now, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Well done, Nora and Rob. Thank you uh very much. And thanks to all of our businesses in Westwood. Um, whose licenses we we renewed. Wonderful. Moving on, uh, we have a an update from the Charter Review Committee. Um, and I see that the members of the Charter Review Committee are coming in. Uh, welcome all of you. I see uh co-chair Paul Fitzgerald, hi Paul. Um, and co-chair Peter Cahill. Hi Peter, welcome. Uh, we have uh other members include Dottie Powers, Madam Clerk, welcome. See Jessica Cole, who is the recording secretary uh for the Charter Review Committee coming in. Hi Jessica. And uh counsel Lauren Goldberg is with us. Uh, good evening, counsel.
Good evening. Thank you for having me.
Member of the Charter Review Committee and John Lockne. Uh, and I should also mention uh that Chris Coleman and Pata Hearn serve as ex officio members of the Charter Review Committee. And I I don't want to steal your fire, but at the outset, I do want to thank all of you for your very significant public service on this committee, which has been in existence since March of twenty twenty-two. And I understand that you have been meeting multiple times per month since last May. And uh we want to thank you for the significant work you are doing with respect to our town governance. And thank you for being here tonight, and we're uh anxious to hear your update. So thank you and welcome.
Thank you, um, Madam Chairperson. I would note that the uh this has also been duly noticed as a meeting of the Charter Commission and that a quorum of said commission is present and I and um so I will also call to order the Charter Commission for purposes of this joint meeting, Madam Chairperson. So um, I'm chairperson and members of the board, select persons. We have um, as you indicated, been working uh for a number of months. We have finalized our draft recommendations, which we wish to make to the select uh board this evening and talk through these uh recommendations and and what we suggest the next steps would be as we move forward, hopefully to presenting them as various articles at the Springtown Meeting. And so I have, we prepared a PowerPoint presentation. Uh, and I want to thank Peter Cahill for his work on that, as well as a chart that reflects what the precise changes are to help the board in its deliberations in this matter. And I've asked Jess if she would uh be our PowerPoint operator.
Okay, bear with me. I think I've I've got it.
You just put yourself on mute, Jess.
Everybody see the PowerPoint?
I can.
Yes, okay. Uh, so um why don't we start with the first slide, Jess? And as as I noted, we've continued to work last at the last Springtown meeting, we brought forward the article to change the position of town treasurer and town collector, tax collector to be elected positions. That was approved at the town meeting and the legislation to affect that changes as my understanding is still currently uh pending before the legislature. We have articles.
Mister Chairman, if I may for a minute?
Yes.
Well, let me recommend that you take a roll call of the Charter Commission people that are present here so they'll
Sure. Co-chair Cahill?
Uh, here, present.
Uh, member Hyde?
Here.
Member Lockne?
Present.
Um, uh, Madam Clerk? Kirk Powers, I think she's present. Did see her.
He's just on you.
Yeah. We do have a a quorum present, I believe. I did see Madam Clerk Powers present as well. So um, so thank you for that.
Jess, could I just ask you to put it into um slide, you know, full screen view? If you just go to view and put it into full screen?
Hey, Nancy's on as well. I didn't know if uh if I just misheard that, sorry.
Yeah, I did. Yep.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Thanks.
Just go up to view. Up above, over to the left, yeah.
And now you can control it with your arrow keys.
Yes. So um, we have characterized the articles that we are recommending to the select board as substantive articles because we think they present enough of a significant change in either the functions, roles or methods and means of election of various town bodies that we think that each one of them for deserves individual consideration at town meetings so that the members of the town can fully understand what it is that we're proposing. And then uh this also includes a transition article. We believe we're recommending that the position of town clerk remain as an appointed position, and we have drafted a transition article which would provide that um uh Clerk Powers, who has tenure by the Act of the Legislature uh until her seventieth birthday, would remain as the appointed clerk. And at that point in time, would have the option to seek to be the first appointed town clerk. We would not change that until um Clerk Powers has completed her very very laudatory service to the town in that position. We also have articles that we consider to be technical changes.
I'm sorry, real quick, I I I think yeah, just to clarify, um, the position of town clerk would remain elected until.
Well, it's, well, right now, it's it's an appointed position.
It is appointed, okay. I just, I I wasn't sure the.
It would not, it would not change the status if, under the current legislation that granted uh Clerk Powers the appointed uh position, when she finishes her term of service, it would go back to being an elected position. We are recommending that it remain in appointed position for reasons we're happy to discuss.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
No, that's okay. Uh, and then we also have what we would call technical articles. These are edits that we believe are noncontro- con- non-controversial and are intended to make provisions of the charter clearer, easier to follow or allow the respective town officials or appointees to function more uh efficiently. And then we have what we would consider housekeeping articles to correct typos, reformatting, renumbering, or needed to comport with state law. So Jess, if you could go to the next slide. So we we suggest that these would be the substantive articles that we would break out. One relates to the quorum. One relates to the town clerk that we just discussed, and another relates to the members of the Finance and War Commission. Another would relate to the change in the status of the personal advisory board. And then the last would relate to some changes in uh the jurisdiction of the Permanent Building Committee. We also have an article at the end addressing the Housing Authority because as currently drafted in the in the charter, um, Ms. Goldberg has advised the commission that some of the language is archaic and is not consistent with the way housing authorities are established and function under state, current state law. So if you go to the next slide, Jess? What we are suggesting for the quorum article, which would be section two subsection eight, little one of the existing charter, is that we only require a quorum at the commencement of town meeting. The town bylaw would continue to establish what the requisite number would be to establish a quorum. But once a quorum is established and and accepted by the town clerk and the town moderator, the town, the meeting would proceed without anybody questioning the quorum until the business of the town was completed. We we recommend this for a number of reasons. A lot of towns have gone to a zero form. Uh, we're not necessarily sure we should go to that at this point. But what it it means is that that the town meeting can finish its business hopefully in one night because we all know the difficulties that arise when you have to continue a town meeting. It also encourages people to stay for the whole meeting rather than leave when their particular article that they're concerned about is finished with because oftentimes we have people, you know, just staying for the zoning articles, for example, and we'd like to try to have people stay longer. And as it says, if voters leave during the course of the meeting, we would can be able to continue the business of the town meeting. So that's our recommendation relative to a quorum. If you could go to the next slide, Jess?
Uh, Paul?
Yes.
If I could just comment, so first of all, I think, I I, you know, I know uh, I just wanted to comment to uh to the board. So we have this uh presentation and and Paul's doing a terrific job. If we're trying to cram into a few minutes, you know, what has taken hours and hours and hours to talk about and discuss and and evaluate, so. So we we sort of you know, thank you in advance for your patience and and, you know, and sort of being inundated with uh quite a bit even in this summary. Um, but it, we're trying to give you the the outline and the the high level sort of key points and thoughts. Uh, we do have a summary, the the chart that gets into a bit more detail. Uh, and then uh we do have a a draft, which I think was forwarded to the office, but I don't know if it made it to the to your packets of the actual text, you know, uh proposed and and text of the the updated charter. So you could see the specific language changes. So um, so it, I, we're sort of throwing a lot back at you, but um, you know, we're trying to just give you the, you know, the the overview and the key points as as best we can. Um, and just on the quorum, uh, I did we also would uh have, we would suggest that the uh amount, the the number that is the quorum is established by bylaw and not not within the charter, just so it can be adjusted more at the discretion of the town. Uh, if it, if there's a preference to. Uh, if it, if there's a preference to go, uh, up or down with, with that. So I just wanted to make that one other comment. And we expect, uh, that after we're done with, well, we wouldn't expect, we would sort of suggest, uh, to the board for your consideration is after you're done with any Charter review, you probably have a bylaw review. Um, and I know, uh, Clerk Powers has, has commented and, and, you know, very thoughtfully pointed this out to us, uh, repeatedly, that we would want to have that kind of review as well to make sure that, uh, we are sort of updating that appropriately and including within the bylaws provisions that are more applicable and appropriate in a bylaw setting versus the Charter.
Thank you.
And, and it would be our intention, after we present this tonight and, and provide you with the draft, we would, uh, a number of us are, would make ourselves available at the next Board of Select, uh, Persons Meeting. So if there is any, uh, any, um, comments or changes that we could, um, uh, address those at that time. All right, so the, the next slide, the next article we would recommend relates to, um, elected offices. We need to, assuming that the state legislature does a, a, adopt the Home Rule petition, and we have no reason to believe that they won't, we need to adjust the town Charter to reflect that the Town Treasurer and Tax Collector are now appointed positions and not elected positions. And as we say, we would, um, have a transitory article to make the Town Clerk appointed after the tenure of the current Town Clerk. So we would suggest that that would be a second article. Excuse me. Go ahead, um, Jess. Okay, uh, with the Section 731, the Finance and War Commission. It, uh, we would recommend that the number of, uh, Finance Committee member, Commission members be made more flexible, that it be no less than nine and no more than 15. This provides flexibility to allow members to, if they resign mid-year, to still have a functioning Finance War Commission. And it also would assist the Town Moderator, who is expressed to the commission that he some, he or she sometimes has difficulty in finding 15 people, uh, who are willing to serve at any one time. It would also have, the quorum would be based on the members present at the meeting. And at the, something that was suggested to us by the Board of Select Persons, we would, uh, make it clear that while the, um, Fin, Finance members cannot be elected or appointed members of any other town body, they could be non-voting members of other boards and committees. Again, we think that that should be a separate article. The next article relates to, uh, Chapter 7, Section 4, Little 1, and Chapter 7, Section 4, Little 2, which relates to the Personnel Board. And this, uh, was suggested to us by, uh, Molly Keen and by the, uh, Town Administrator, Mr. Coleman. The nature of the Personnel Advisory Board has changed, given the way that, now that we have a fully operational human resources division in the town. And it was suggested that it would be better if the Personnel Board became a Personnel Advisory Board that could advise the Town Administrator and our HR Director and Assistant Town Administrator on changes and revisions to the classification and compensation plans, rather than have them actually have to sign off on the hiring. Um, it, it makes the hiring process more expeditious and we, enables us to retain, uh, uh, quality candidates quicker.
Madam Chair, can I just ask that anybody who's not presenting, put themselves on mute? I'm getting a lot of sort of tapping and feedback that's sort of distracting.
It's a good suggestion. Thank you. I'll do that myself.
Um, next slide, Jess? The other, um, change would be to, uh, Chapter 7, Subsection 5, Little 1, Chapter 7, 5, Little 2, and, uh, Chapter 7, 5, Little 4, relating to the Permanent Building Commission. And this was also suggested by the Chair and other members of the Permanent Building Commission. It would, um, make it flexible, the, the makeup of the, the, uh, Permanent Building Commission, requiring that a school committee be included on any school project, which would make us consistent with state law and would allow the Permanent Building Committee to decline jurisdiction for smaller projects if the size, scope, or cost of the project does not warrant Permanent Building Committee involvement. The next slide, Jess? Now we turn to, we have a number of technical articles. As I said, these are just, um, designed to make the provisions of the Charter clearer, easier, or allow, um, respective town officials or appointees to function more efficiently. For example, um, one of the technical changes would be relating to the, uh, Town Administrator and how he would, uh, be able to designate deputies and also the, the amount of money that would be required in terms of procurement, things like those sorts of things, which we think reflect not only changes in the way towns are governed, but, um, either the best practices or the current practices of how those functions are actually being carried out. Next slide, Jess? And then housekeeping, I think we're all familiar with the type of housekeeping articles. Um, we see them just about every year from the, uh, on the zoning bylaws, from the Planning Board, and, and then to correct typos, reformatting, renumbering, or need to comport with state law. Some, some of the chapters of state law that we cite in the Charter have changed. And so we want to make sure that we bring them in a conformity with the appropriate section of state law. And next slide, Jess? As we said, we also, uh, want to, uh, have an article on the, uh, makeup and function of the Housing Authority. There is language in the current Charter that references a potential waiver from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Housing Livable, uh, Livable Communities. Lauren Goldberg has suggested that we, that we just make it as simple as possible, that the language say there should be a Housing Authority of five members elected and appointed as provided by law.
And Paul, if I could just add on that, I, I, we actually, I think, could characterize this as a, a technical change. But I think it, it sort of sticks out and we didn't, um, we just wanted to allow, uh, sort of for full vetting and, and discussion, uh, by, uh, by the public and, uh, not think that we were adding, um, you know, adding a new Housing Authority. There is an existing Housing Authority. And it just does clean up, as Paul referenced, sort of how it is referenced in our Charter. Um, I think out of an abundance of caution, we, uh, included here as a separate article, uh, or proposed, or proposed article. We are mindful of the number of these and we sort of wrestle with whether to include it and consolidate it or, um, or have it separate. And at least for, uh, you know, and our recommendation to you, we have it as separate, but, uh, it's not because of the substance of, of the article.
I, I think that that's accurate, Peter. And again, we're just suggesting that for purposes of having the, the, you know, the best possible consideration and debate at town meeting that we want. We want to break them up rather than have articles, um, be amended, take this out of this article because we don't like that vision. We just think that, that it would, uh, make it a robust consideration to do it this way. Uh, do we have one more slide, I think, too? Yes.
Thank you.
As always, um, we welcome feedback on these recommendations from the members of the Select, but also members of the public. We've, we have invited the members of the public to all our meetings. We have had, um, the Town Moderator very actively engaged in our consideration because some of these articles directly relate to his responsibilities as, as, as the presider of town meeting, but also as the pointer of a certain of the boards that we are recommending that we make some changes to. And we will continue to meet, um, until town meeting. Uh, if, if the Select Board is supportive, we are prepared to go to the Finance War Commission to begin our discussions with them also on these, on these, uh, provisions. And Jess, if you could just, uh, call up the, the chart that has the, the changes classified? I think that that's very helpful as well.
If you may, let's get that. I wasn't prepared with that one.
Lauren, is there anything you wanted to add as our, as our, uh, outside counsel?
Um, I, thank you, uh, through you, Madam Chair. The, uh, the only thing I would mention is the Town Clerk's position, even though it's a tenured position, is an elected position. So currently that position is elected, but tenured.
Well, while you're pulling that up, um, perhaps I could ask a few questions. And perhaps we could go through, uh, each of those, to the extent my, my colleagues have questions as well. And first of all, Paul, thank you very much, uh, for that presentation. Uh, I, I can appreciate that many, many hours of work went into each of those, and that's probably understating it. Um, regardless-
Peter in particular for his work.
Well, thank, thank you all. Oh, and I see that the chart is up. Did, did you want to take us through that first, Paul?
Sure. Uh, so as we said, we, we have a description of what we characterize each article as. And what it does, Madam Chair, is point to the exact section of the Charter and has a thumbnail of what the proposal would, would be. Uh, as to, um, whether to substantive change and what is the nature and scope of that change. As you can see, we started with the ones relating to the FinCom and the Personal Advisory Board, the Quorum and the Town Clerk. And then as we go down, we also talk about the ones that are more technical and housekeeping in nature. We just thought that it would be helpful to the board as they go through the draft, if they wanted to find exactly where the, the major changes are. See, when I say technical, for example, you know, we, we rename the annual town meeting, uh, to Town Election, clarifies that the, the date can be adjusted. That's what we would call a post-COVID change, something that we learned in COVID that we want to have the flexibility to do. And so the technical ones are, again, taking out un, uh, words, uh, making sure that it's clear how many days prior to an annual town meeting, the FinCom reports, things like that. And then the housekeeping, um, and technical ones. For example, uh, as I mentioned, some of them relate to the Town Administrator, as you can see in 621, A through Z, for example, we moved the $100,000 contract value threshold that requires Select Board approvals. And we would have the Select Board establish an amount prior to the start of the fiscal year. Um, and adjusting language to the Finance War Commission's involvement in the budget process, for example, things like that, um, things like, uh, when will it be informed? Um, and, uh, yeah, we suggest that the language be changed to regularly informed rather than fully informed, because we believe that terms like fully informed, um, have, create expectations or that may not necessarily reflect how things should actually be done. We think to say that they would be regularly informed is a better way to say it.
And if I could just add, Paul?
Yes.
Um, in, in some ways, the, the technical and, um, changes are to make the document more user-friendly. We found that there were some ways the language was put forth that if you weren't really in the inside baseball part of the whole thing, it doesn't, it didn't necessarily, or currently doesn't necessarily read well. So we're really trying to make things clearer and more understandable for people if they pick up the document. That, that's great. And, and this chart is very helpful. And to be clear, um, this is before us tonight for the purpose of discussion. Uh, there's news that's going to be taken by the board tonight. But I'm sure that, uh, my colleagues, as I do have a number of questions, I'm going to suggest that we go through each of the substantive articles to the extent we have questions on them. And if I may, I'd like to start on the first one relative to the quorum. Um, I certainly appreciate the desire to allow the town to get its business done, um, when there is a quorum at the outset. Um, I'm curious as to, um, how, uh, other communities in Massachusetts are handling this. And Attorney Goldberg, I'm, I'm just curious as to your thoughts as to whether you could envision any legal valid, uh, valid legal challenge uh, to the provision that, um, there shall be no quorum requirements that apply after that initial quorum is, is established.
Yes, um, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, in my opinion, this is consistent with the way that, uh, other communities have been going, uh, in that they've been reducing or eliminating quorum requirements. Uh, the nice thing about this is it's kind of a compromise because it still requires a forum to start the meeting, but then allows the, the meeting to continue its business.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions from my colleagues on the quorum?
Just in terms of overall process, I, because this all, this is sort of an overarching to each of the substantive changes. Can you talk a little bit, Paul or Peter, as to, you, you've been meeting since March of last year? And, uh, you've held a number of meetings. And I believe you've, you've had quite a few folks in to comment on things that could, should be addressed, right? Can you talk to sort of the breadth of the input that you got?
Certainly, uh, we had a survey, uh, prepared and with Chris Coleman and, and Trish Healy's help, sent out to all of the town boards and departments. We asked them to go through their section of the Charter and tell us anything that they thought worked well or didn't work well. And we invited them to comment on any outside sections of the Charter that, you know, don't necessarily, uh, come under their jurisdiction, but that they have to relate to. And then we started a process of bringing in, um, the, the stakeholders, as you indicated, uh, Select, uh, Select Person Gotti, and took, uh, testimony, if you will, from them and, and solicited their ideas. And, and we also asked them, even when they came before us, you know, Planning Board members, don't just talk to us about the Planning Board. As Planning Board, you also want to relate to other parts of the Charter, other things that would make your life easier or you've observed would make things better. Um, and-
Yeah, and, and what, and, you know, on that point, I mean, s- it's true that, that, uh, folks that have ser- served on one board, uh, very likely have had prior experiences in another role, uh, uh, in either an appointed or elected capacity. So it was absolutely made sense to glean as much as we could from everybody that came in front of us. Uh, through, uh, and again, as Paul said, not just on where they happen to be, uh, functioning and assisting the town at present.
In fact, I think we invited some past members of, uh, FinCom, uh, past chairs to come and speak to us. I think we've spoken to all of the, uh, the current Select, uh, Board members and, uh, and former members there. And we were very fortunate in having Pat not only function as, as the Town Council, but based on his, uh, his, um, experience as an, as an elected official in the town as well.
And can you just comment on the, with respect to the, the quorum? You, you were saying, setting the number, you are recommending moving that to bylaw to allow for greater flexibility. Can you elaborate just for people who may be not as familiar?
Yeah, we, we, uh, we don't believe that the number for a quorum is appropriate for the Charter. We believe that that's something that the town and, and, and other towns do by bylaw. The bylaw would have the specific number that is needed to commence the town meeting. Um, and there are some towns, as, as, uh, Lauren indicated, that have gone to what's known as a zero quorum. Uh, and, and the thought behind that, uh, Mr. Gotti, is that it encourages people to participate in town meeting because those that show up will be the people who get to make the decisions. Um, and so, uh, we think that that's a tool that will make people more, uh, desirous to come to town meeting. And we also would just want to avoid a situation where people come, as we see at town meetings, they come for their particular articles, often the budget or the school. And then they, and then they leave. But we often have 20 more articles that are all important matters, particularly zoning matters. And, and we just think that to have to, to have to, um, uh, you know, adjourn a town meeting and continue it to another night is just fraught with, uh, challenges. And we also know that it's hard to do. And the second night, often you have a problem even getting an initial quorum.
And by doing this, it allows us to revisit it on an annual basis, if necessary, as opposed to every once every 10 years?
The, yes. And, yeah, the bylaw could be amended at any special or annual town meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the quorum? Calling in an article for the purpose of tonight's discussion. Uh, if not, I'll move it to the Town Clerk, uh, article. Any questions or comments on that from my colleagues? No?
This was, i- i- if I were- This was, if I recall, you guys had a presentation from the state on, I don't know if it was the same for the clerk as it was for the treasurer, tax collector. Was this something that sort of followed the same recommendation?
I think it follows from the same desire to have the best administered town in a 21st century, Mr. Gotti. We know that the town clerk has become a vital, vitally important position in the town, particularly as it relates to elections. We know what happens when elections are not run properly, or when there's compromise, or when there's a question as to the legitimacy of an election. I think we've had, I think Lauren has some experience in recent times of of issues when there's a problem with the with the town election. So we think that because of the vital importance of that, that we should have someone who is trained, certified, up to date on the changes in that technology. We're very fortunate in that our current town clerk has given a lot of time and effort to getting certifications, being abreast of changes in best practices. In fact, I can tell you that other town clerks turn to our town clerk, Ms. Powers, for best practices and suggestions. And we just felt that to have a professional office with the individual holding that position that has the expertise, the education, the certification, the skills and experiences needed, that to go to an appointed position allows the town the ability to find the best person for the job, which is why we thought the treasurer and the collector should also become appointed positions.
Thank you for that explanation.
That is very helpful. Let me turn to the FinCom article, which is near and dear to my heart. Having chaired FinCom, and I do understand what you're trying to do here. I do know, as prior chair of FinCom, that it can be a challenge at times to have 15 members that people need. Personal circumstances come up where folks have to step down during their tenure. And in addition, you know, life gets in the way, and sometimes folks miss meeting despite best intentions. So, you know, even with 15, you may not have 15 people in attendance. My concern is that nine could get you down to a place where you're at six members attending a meeting. I'm just concerned, I understand that the idea is to provide some flexibility and to say, it's okay if you don't have 15 at this moment. But I'm just a little concerned about the number of nine. And I would also like it to be aspirational that we have 15. In other words, I'm concerned about having the charter suggest that nine is, you know, okay. I think, in my opinion, I'm more comfortable keeping with 15 as all, but allowing for attrition to be, you know, valid and a legal number. So I just wanted to throw that concern out. And I'm wondering what your thoughts are. I'm sure you.
Yeah.
We have two FinCom members. I'd let them speak to that. Former FinCom members. Peter?
Do we only have two? Yeah, we at least have two. Yeah, the the size of finance or warrant commissions is broad, ranging from five to 15. 15 is on the upper end and of the upper end of the number of members that would constitute a FinCom, or some towns call it a finance, or some towns would just call it advisory committee. And so we're on the upper range of that. And we were trying to balance the, well, I guess I shouldn't say it officially, as we wrestle with it. I know one thought was trying to balance the input that allowing up to 15 members could have, you could have diversity in region, opinion, perspective. And by having that many, that it definitely fosters that concept and allows the moderator to achieve that. At the same time, it just seems that that can occasionally be a chore and a task, and sometimes a very difficult one for the moderator to actually find that number of people on an annual basis to be appointed to three-year term. And so if low, just reducing that number seemed too drastic. And so that's why I think it doesn't say, instead of going from 15, we're just going to reduce it to nine or some other number. That seems too much of a leap. But yet, we're trying to balance, you know, the balance by recognizing some of the difficulties that exist, but still allowing for the full appointments to be had. So I think that's what the effort is, is a balancing effort.
Nancy, did you want to add anything?
I really don't have anything to add. I just will say, I was also a former FinCom member, so I had the perspective that Mary Ann is providing, and also very close to watching it over the years. And I think this is, I don't think we've run into problems, Mary Ann, with nine dropping to six. I think it's really more people who, you know, might be those that are most dedicated to being there, if at some point it is at nine. 15, I think maybe people get a little bit lost in the what's my role in all this, even though I know I have a vote. And we did, but as Peter said, we don't want to change the number, the amount, the number of people that can be in. So if a moderator thinks 15 is the right number, it allows for 15. If somebody steps off, it doesn't put pressure on the moderator to fill somebody that role in with only three months left before town meeting. It just provides more flexibility.
Would you consider upping that lower number, maybe?
Well, I think we'd like to hear more. I think that's, we considered all of that, just so you know.
Yeah, I'm sure you did.
Nine to what's the right number. We're at 15. That's a tradition. It's unusual to have that many. Sometimes I can make it more challenging than it needs to be. So there isn't a right answer. I think we're trying to find out what works well for this town.
I would encourage you to think about, or at least my thought is the lower number should be a higher number. Personally, I am at this moment uncomfortable with the notion of going to nine.
Madam Chair?
Please.
Just a quick question. So as you were speaking with the moderator and members of FinCom, was there any input with respect to, I mean, you're naturally cycling five people a year at three-year terms. And then you also have folks who need to drop off for whatever personal reasons. And so does that become a challenge, trying to find and vet that many folks to fill those vacancies? And is that, was that a factor in why you're recommending the range?
It was, Mr. Gotti, particularly from when the town moderator spoke to us, because he or she has to very quickly, after town meeting, I think, or 60 days, if I recall, Pat, or somebody can correct me.
Not even that.
No, yeah, has to, has to find a full quota of 15 people, 15 qualified, I mean, people who bring something to the process. And so that causes difficulties for the town. So that was, that did play into our function. And again, as Nancy said, you know, it is no magic number. We, the idea is to have that flexibility, so that if we don't have 15 people who are willing to serve or re-up, you know, because you don't also want to impose on the same people, you know, every three years, that we have that flexibility. That's the goal, is the flexibility. The number is a means towards that flexibility.
Understood. Anything else on this article from my colleagues?
Yeah, the other thing that I like that you addressed in here is the ability for FinCom members to serve as ex officio or in other boards and committees. I mean, you know, these are people who are well informed in what's going on in the town. And many of them sort of fill the old adage of if you want something done, find a busy person. So, you know, these are, these are well-informed folks who it would be helpful if they wanted to serve on something that they could. So I definitely support that as a change.
I just want to underscore that as well. And that was a perennial issue. And in fact, we had folks who were serving and didn't know, this is, you know, years ago. But, you know, to Rob's point, you know, the better informed FinCom is, the better that FinCom is going to function. And, you know, folks have, you know, interests in various aspects of town. So I think that's good for FinCom. I think it's good for the town. And I think that's a great change.
If I can give a little bit of a history, a perspective on this, I think, and Pat will help me here a little bit, but I think it was in the early 90s that there was a change brought to town meeting. Then the more important part of the change was that if somebody's on FinCom, they couldn't run for office, elected office in the town. Because, well, I'm not going to speak for the people who brought that forward, but the town supported it and felt that that was not an appropriate overlap. Somebody could be getting inside information on the budgets or probing into it more and have a different kind of advantage in an election, whatever. They could have had a lot of thoughts. I'm not sure, but I think that's when this FinCom not being on other boards and commissions might have been brought in. Pat, do you know if that came at the same time?
It was a little bit before my time, and that's hard for me to say.
So.
But I think, I think you're correct.
I think it was a bigger reach than what was really intended. And these things do evolve. And we know that volunteer participation in town government is so important to the success of the town. Elected positions, board appointments, it matters. It helps. And we're not trying to limit the ability of people to contribute to their community. We want to make it productive. And my experience, and I think, Mary Ann, you might agree, is that finance commission members on these boards and commissions provide valuable input. And so we think the ex officio status is a good way to move forward.
So we've also had some very good people step off of FinCom to run for public office and have done a good, good job in those offices. So the ability to flex down from 15 or lower than that at the back end of the year, I've seen moderators scramble, try and fill positions to stay at 15 to get to town meeting. And with this particular change, they would not have to do that.
And so that's why the language that you're proposing is that they can serve as ex officio appointed members, but it doesn't change to their, you know.
No, if they want to run for office, they're going to have to jump off. We're not changing.
Or be appointed as a full member of another board. They can't do that.
Hey, let's see, we do have some other items on our agenda, but I want to make sure we get through all of this.
Again, Madam Chairperson, we're perfectly willing to come again to talk some more about this as well.
Thank you so much. And I'm sure we'll take you up on that. But I want to make sure we don't have any questions on the personnel board article or the PBC article.
Again, that one shows the sort of evolution in our town governance. There was a time when we did not have a personnel department, human resource director. And we have professionalized that department over the past several years. And this reflects what the Personnel Board does and where they can continue to be helpful to the town.
And I believe it also reflects the role that they see themselves as playing and think is a more positive role for them. And I think Molly had indicated to us that in her dealings with the Personnel Board, that they thought that that was a more positive role for them to play.
Thank you. Let's see, we do, we do have a, let me ask Rob and Joe, any other questions that you have at the moment?
No further questions from me.
We do have one public question that I'll read from Fran Fusco, 20 Pine Lane. She says, "There is interest in expanding the Select Board to five members instead of the three. Could this idea move forward? In the Charter Review Committee minutes, said it would be more work for town staff, and that should not be a factor. Given that the town has grown and many other communities have five Select Board members, this seems to be a normal progression." Any, I know that's not before us tonight. I don't know if you're prepared to comment on that, whether.
Well, it wasn't just, I mean, part of it was, you know, for the town administrator, the functionality. But we were, I mean, I was concerned, and I think some of my colleagues were concerned about public meeting and open meeting law challenges that happen when you have five members, in terms of, you know, two members who are not a quorum can engage in discussions. And we thought that having things through the town administrator is consistent with the letter and spirit of the open meeting law. And I personally, I didn't see any compelling reason to expand to five, given that the town, the level of good governance we have in the town, financial, public policy, I just thought that the town is running very well and very successfully with a three-person, that's only my view.
I guess if I could add a little color, I mean, the Finance and Warrant Commission, when we went before them with respect to the treasurer and tax collector article, were very concerned about cost and impact of those kinds of changes. So I would disagree that being blind to potential financial impact of any decision is not relevant. I'm not saying, I don't want to overstate what that impact would be, but I would say it's relevant. To the extent that we're growing and just naturally ought to have five, I mean, the numbers of towns that are five or towns that still have three, you can find whichever one you want, you can find comparable communities that we would consider peer communities that would still have three members, some have five, some go to five and regret it. You know, we understand it from the town, from folks in Foxborough, that they did that and they regret, you know, going to five. So it's unlike the treasurer and tax collector position, where the data was just so overwhelming and the logic was so overwhelming, where there was a clear and compelling reason to adjust that. There's not that same kind of comprehensive and compelling background and analysis that we can show on moving the board members for the select board from three to five. It seems a preference. And so it boils down to, for most people, it's a preference, just because.
Thank you. Any other questions from my colleagues or comments?
No, I just want to say, this is a fantastic committee, the composition, the commitment that you have made. We are very, very fortunate to have such dedicated professionals as you all. I mean, it's quite a legal, legal team and some fantastic history. I mean, it's quite a legal, legal team and some some fantastic history in terms of serving the town. Thank you all.
Well, thank you. But coming up, coming on early, I learned that the mothers, my plans for Mother's Day, I should circle the calendar with an earlier start for the liquor license. That's, that's, that's now on my radar, having coming in early to this meeting.
And I, if I, I may, I also.
Not to take a soft topic, but it, you know, yes, we've done a lot of work and a lot. We've touched every corner of this document of the Charter in the course of our discussions. And um important changes were made when it was done ten plus years ago, when it was updated. We um did a lot in terms of just defining town administrator responsibilities and the finance department. So really, our work reflected the evolution of prior work. Uh, it doesn't preclude charter changes from being uh addressed between these comprehensive reviews. Uh, but we really have been comprehensive in our look at it, and we're bringing forth the things that we felt were important, are the most important and compelling and uh and cleaning up the document at the same time. So um it's been a great working group and having Lauren and Pat there and and Chris as um people to guide us in the process has really been quite valuable, and we really appreciate their input along the way.
Thank you so much for the work that you have all done um and looking at that document so carefully. I I was on FinCom at the last go around uh when this came before us. Uh, and I remember Paul, you were there and and Lauren was there and and many of you were there.
Was there, yeah.
I I have to speak, uh, you know, on behalf of my colleague, Mr. Prevetera, who has had his hand up, but it's it's hidden in his window there. So he's been very patient. So I think he has something to say.
Go ahead, Joe. Sorry, I did not see it, and I still don't.
I I don't, thanks, Rob. Shoot, I'll tell you what shows up on my screen. Marion, I just, uh, two comments. Uh, one is I I thought this presentation was well organized. It was clear. And I really appreciated the slide deck to help uh help me get my bearings on this as we went through it. I do have a question at a housekeeping. Uh, can I ask that? Now, or should I wait till later?
Happy to answer any question you have, uh, Mr. Prevetera.
Okay, I just, my only question was under uh six dot two dot one. How long ago, Paul, was the hundred thousand dollar threshold set?
Uh, it was, it was there uh at least ten years ago. It it was, it was, it was back then. Uh, it was back then, Joe. Uh, someone who used to practice in municipal law, and Lauren and 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 Pat will will uh will back me up on this. It used to be things that you had to get uh approval for. Was it more than fifteen thousand? Uh, you could get quote, it was a ridiculous number of of things you could only get a quote on. Um, so uh I think there's been a recognition that um the the level of um competence that town administrators now have as procurement officers and the training that they go through um and that their awareness of uh of the law. But that that's been, I I, yeah.
I kind of suspect, I kind of suspected that, Paul, because in the hospital, every other year, my threshold will go up. So I had a feeling back a few years.
This one is long overdue.
And as you see, as you see, Joe, every year you would be able to set what that threshold is.
Yep, yep. Thank you very much. And and great job, great job.
So we we thank you again. I'm sure that we will be seeing you at an upcoming meeting and very much appreciate your offer to come back. Um, so uh with that, uh, thank you all very, very.
May I just close the Charter Commission meeting?
I hope we close the Charter Commission meeting.
Motion to adjourn made by Member Hyde. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Powers, uh, calls a roll. Member Cahill?
Yes.
Member Hyde?
Yes.
Member Lockname?
Yes.
A member Powers?
Yes.
And the chair also votes in affirmative. Thank you. Um, and we will, happy to come and discuss it anytime, Madam Chipper.
Thank you so much and good night, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move uh to our next uh scheduled action, which is uh the FY twenty four tax classification hearing. I will entertain a motion to open this hearing. Oh, you're on mute, Rob.
Thank you. If we move that we open the uh twenty twenty four. Well, hang on a second here. Uh.
Madam Chairman, point of order. I think you have to reopen it. I think you opened it the last time we met and continue.
It actually is open. You're right, Pat. Uh, it's, it was continued until tonight, so the hearing is actually open. I jumped, okay. I was being extra efficient. It is.
I understand, and I respect and appreciate that.
I thank you for the point of order. So this hearing is uh now open, having been continued from our November thirteen, twenty twenty three meeting. And joining us, we have our uh Director of Finance, Stephanie McManus. Uh, we have um, is John Curran with us? Not seeing him, but we have Mark Murphy, uh, the Chair of Board of Assessors. Hello, Mark. And Nancy Hyde, who again, who also serves uh on the board. And um, am I missing anyone for this discussion?
Uh, Chris McEwen may join us, but Tish will, I'm sure, let him in if he if he's able to get on. We posted this meeting as a meeting, just so you know, so that more that I could join and Chris could join along with Mark, but Mark is taking the lead. So I think we have to break, call our meeting to order, Mark.
Uh, yes, so I think I should uh make a motion to call the uh Board of Assessors meeting to order.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Um, roll call vote, uh, Ms. Hyde?
Yes.
And I also vote in the affirmative.
Well, welcome and um, take it away, Mark.
Uh, thank you. Do you, does everyone have the um, the PowerPoint presentation in front of you? I can share my screen, I think, if that would be helpful.
I I think that would for for residents to follow along, Mark. Thank you.
Okay. Bear with me a second.
Take your time. And thank you all for being here.
All right, um, those of you who have been on the uh Select Board in the past will probably recognize um, a lot of this information that's here today. Uh, but let me um just run through the uh information that we have um, and recap um some information about what's happened with assessments and what's the impact on the potential rates um that would be applied for FY twenty four. Uh, so just to re- uh refresh everyone, the dates of valuation for FY twenty four for assessment purposes are the preceding January first. So for FY twenty four, it's January one of twenty twenty three. Um, it takes into consideration the sales from calendar year twenty twenty two. It does not take into consideration um sales in twenty twenty three. That will um impact uh next year's valuations. Um, despite the, it's a little confusing, the, despite the January one, twenty twenty three valuation date, the town can pick up new values through June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. So there's an additional six months of uh of growth that can be picked up and valued as of January one, twenty twenty three. Um, the uh, as as many of you may be aware, the um, the values increased uh significantly in town during twenty twenty two. Um, the overall value increased uh over twenty one percent. Uh, total value in the community from twenty three, from FY twenty three to FY twenty four, with residential values increasing uh over twenty four percent, twenty four point two nine percent. And commercial values increasing uh almost eight percent, seven point seven five percent. Um, commercial values in FY twenty four will be twelve point nine three percent of the total value, which is a decrease from last year of fourteen point six two percent. Um, at the bottom here, there's a breakdown of the uh, the total values by each category. Um, totaling um the total value in the town. Um, just to speak a little bit to the um, there's a chart here, uh, more bottom left corner, which uh charts what the commercial value has been as a percent of the total value in the community from FY ninety one through FY twenty through FY twenty four. So uh, almost, almost twenty five years of of history here. Um, and as you can see, in the early nineties, uh, commercial values were a significantly larger portion of the total value in the community. Um, they were, it was at twenty five percent. Um, it has declined over the years. Um, there was a concerted effort to try to increase commercial values um because of this decline. And you can see here in the more recent years, um, say, within the last ten years, commercial values were increasing. They got up to a little higher than fifteen percent, dipped down below and and then uh increased again to a little more than fifteen percent a few years ago. But in the last two years, the commercial value as a percentage of the total has declined. Um, that is a function, uh, it doesn't mean that commercial values have declined, but as a percent of the total, they have declined. And that is a function largely because of the dramatic growth in residential values over the last few years. Um, and because residential is growing at a faster rate than commercial, it becomes a larger percentage of the total value in the community. Um, you can see here just uh by pie chart, uh, the residential eighty seven point one, commercial at twelve point nine percent. Um, let's see, next slide. Um, I just point out that uh the header here says FY twenty three, new tax growth. That should be, that's actually FY twenty four, new tax growth. Uh, total new FY twenty four tax growth, uh, nine hundred and sixty six thousand. Um, the residential new growth was four hundred and thirty thousand, uh, including uh new housing and reservations, renovations. Um, and commercial new growth was um five hundred and thirty five thousand. The calculating the tax rate, so the tax rate is is really just a algebraic result. Um, it's the total tax levy needed to be raised, uh, divided by the total assessed value. So for FY twenty four, the tax levy is just over ninety seven million dollars. The FY tw- twenty four total assessed values is um almost six point eight million. Uh, the FY twenty four, if there was a single rate, would be fourteen point fourteen dollars and thirty five cents per thousand. We don't have a single rate uh in Westwood. We have a tax shift, meaning that commercial about uh, commercial properties pay at a higher rate. So that's what the purpose of this meeting is, is to discuss that shift and what's the appropriate shift. The shift ultimately will help us, uh, will tell us uh what the rates will be depending on uh what the shift actually is. The um, we can recommend, the Board of Assessors can recommend a shift from one to one point seven five. Uh, one point seven five is the cap um under Massachusetts law. Um, the the shift check factor determines how much the tax levy is paid by each property class. So if we had a shift factor of one, everyone would, everyone would pay at the same tax rate, both residential and commercial. The higher the shift, the more is shifted on uh onto commercial uh properties and the more they would pay as a percent of the total levy. Um, the Board of Assessors is recommending a shift of one point seven two for FY twenty four. Um, and I'd just like to take you through a little bit of information about how we came to that recommendation. Um, the uh, the history of the shift factor here is um, is in this middle bullet point. Um, for FY seven through FY fourteen, it was at one point six five percent. Um, FY fifteen through FY eighteen, we uh recommended an increase and the uh Select Board approve, uh, agreed with that and increased it to one point seven percent, meaning that more of value was shifted onto um commercial properties. Um, in FY nineteen, we recommended moving it back slightly because we were, um, more commercial values were coming online and um it was feasible to um, reduce that shift uh from one point seven to one point six eight. Um, for the last three years, residential values have been increasing significantly faster than commercial values. And so with the last three years, um, the shift factor has been at one point seven percent. Um, at one point seven two percent, the shift in FY twenty four would produce uh, a commercial property being twelve point nine three percent of the total value, but they would pay twenty two point two percent of the total taxes. In FY twenty three, that number was significantly higher, uh, almost twenty five percent of the total taxes. So the um, this chart uh lays out what the um, what the uh amount of uh the levy or what the amount of taxes as a percentage would be produced at a one point seven two percent shift. So uh residential um as a percent of the levy would be uh seventy seven point seven five percent. Um, commercial would be twenty two point two three percent. Uh, the tax rate um at the resident, for residential, at the one point seven two percent shift would be uh twelve dollars and eighty one cents. The commercial would be twenty four dollars and sixty eight cents. Uh, if we did not have a shift in the uh commercial uh rate, uh, the single tax rate would produce um a a tax bill that's roughly eighteen hundred dollars higher on average. Um. So uh total town taxes, you can see here FY twenty two, FY twenty three, and FY twenty four. Um, just the the total uh amount raised. Um, the DOR average home value in Westwood, you can see here, uh FY twenty two, it was uh eight hundred and thirty eight thousand, FY twenty four, one million, one hundred and sixty five thousand. The sample tax bill um would be uh in FY twenty two, twelve thousand four hundred dollars. In twenty three, thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars. And in FY twenty four, fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars, and I'm rounding those numbers slightly. Um, the change in the bill, sixty three dollars in twenty two, eight hundred and thirty dollars in twenty three, and sixteen hundred dollars in twenty four. And you can see here the percentage changes based on each of those amounts. And then the um savings from the split rate. Uh, just, just to reiterate the points here that uh we just talked about here, the average value calculated by the Department of Revenue, um, or since FY twenty two, eight hundred and thirty eight thousand to one point one six five million. Uh, the median value, meaning half of the values are above and half of the values are below, uh, has also increased significantly. Um, but what's happened is more of the new homes that have come online have been of um higher value. So that's increasing the amount of the residential value in the community. Um, this chart here below. This chart here below just gives some more detail on some of the median and sample average values. Here is a, which I think is a very helpful slide. And just to reiterate, Prop two and a half controls the amount of taxes that are raised by the town. It does not impact individual bills. So every year we have a situation where different segments of the market are increasing at different rates. If they're increasing faster than others, they are, the amount of their bill may increase more than some of their neighbors who may not be in a house that's, or a type of house that's increasing as quickly. So starting here at the top with a house at a value in FY twenty three at two million seventy thousand. The value for FY twenty four, a twenty four point eight percent increase to two point five eight million. The taxes increasing from twenty nine thousand six hundred to thirty three thousand one hundred and eleven point eight percent increase. So just to point out here, the percentage increase is not necessarily what the tax bill will increase because while we're increasing values, the rates are coming down because there's been such an increase in the total value of the community. So increasing values, declining rates. These are still significant increases. But they are not, there, it's not a linear relationship between the amount of increase in the value and the increase in the tax bill. So, for example, a house here FY twenty three with a valuation just over one million dollars and FY twenty three would have a value of approximately one point two five million in twenty four. Again, a twenty three percent increase and a tax bill that would increase ten point nine percent. As you can see here, all the value ranges within Westwood increased substantially in twenty twenty two, calendar year twenty twenty two, with every property type having increases of twenty percent or more. Just a quick comparison here between some of the surrounding communities and where their rates have been. The commercial rate is of particular interest. The surrounding communities have mostly in, well, with two exceptions, Medfield and Wellesley, rates above twenty dollars per thousand. Canton and Dedham with twenty one point five seven, and Dedham with twenty six dollars and fifty five cents, Needham at twenty six dollars and forty three cents, and Norwood at twenty three dollars and seven cents. At the one point seven two percent shift, the Westwood commercial rate would be twenty three dollars and sixty eight cents, which compares to the prior FY twenty four rate, excuse me, the FY twenty three rate of twenty seven dollars and sixty three cents. So a significant decline, decline in the rate for commercial as well as a decline in the rate for residential. So that's the information we have for you. Based upon all of this information, we thought it was appropriate to increase the shift from the current one point seven percent to one point seven two percent in order to somewhat alleviate the large increase in, in values and then the resulting increase in in tax bills. If we had not, if we were recommending keeping the rate the same at one point seven percent, the, the increases in the tax bills would, for residential would be slightly higher, the rate would be approximately two cents per thousand higher at one point seven. So we, our recommendation was to move to one point seven two. It's not the maximum. We're a little bit concerned that we might need some flexibility next year. So we didn't want to move all the way to one point seven five for this year so that we, we had some flexibility next year. In our conversations with John Curran, the assessor, it, what he is, we don't know the exact numbers of the increases in values for calendar year twenty twenty three, which would impact fiscal year twenty five. But what we have seen are increases, but not of the dramatic kind that were experienced in calendar year twenty twenty two. So hopefully we do not have this situation again in a year from now when we're talking about the FY twenty five shift and the FY twenty five tax rates. Because we don't think the twenty three calendar year values increased at nearly the amount of, at the nearly the rate that the twenty twenty two values increased. So happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, Mark, for that presentation and to the entire board for your work. I will open this up to my colleagues for any questions or comments that you might have.
So, Mark, thank you and thank you to the board for preparing this. Just a couple comments and a question. First, not surprised by the values as you've seen them grow. I think each of us has experienced the neighbor putting a house on the market where we might have been mouth agape at what they were listing for and have seen them sell for higher than what they listed for and had multiple backup offers. So, you know, that speaks to the desirability of the community. I guess one of the questions that people have asked me is, you know, why, why so dramatic? And, and obviously it's driven by the market, but can you talk to sort of the the process that you are, that you follow as it's sort of laid out by the state? This is a fairly prescribed process, is it not?
It, you're absolutely correct. It is a prescribed process. We have limits on how far, what we can recommend to you. We could not recommend shifting more onto commercial other than increasing the shift to one point seven five. That is the maximum allowable shift. So what we're seeing here is because of the dramatic increases in residential, there are also been increases in commercial values, but not nearly to the extent. So more and more of the total tax burden is being picked up by the residential community in Westwood. We'd love to see commercial be higher, but they just have not grown at the same rates that residential has. So we, we, we somewhat are limited. We're actually very limited in what we can recommend to you. We could recommend moving to one point seven five, but I don't think anyone on the board thought that that was wise because then we are at the maximum shift and we have no ability to adjust or, or give any additional relief next year. By recommending one point seven to one point seven two, we are trying to give some relief to the residential community because we do recognize how significant the increase in values are and the impact on individual tax bills.
Right. And I imagine not having that flexibility in those communities that you showed on a previous slide where they're already at one point seven five. I don't know, John, if you speak to any of your peers in those communities, but they probably are feeling the pain a little bit worse, right, in Dedham and Needham, where they don't have that flexibility to further shift.
That's right. They've been at that one point seven five for a few years now. It's very hard to push it back down after you've achieved that.
And given that we are now sub thirteen percent on the commercial as a percent of the overall total, you know, you highlight the importance of the split tax rate and the savings that that provides to the average homeowner in terms of almost eighteen hundred dollars. Do we, you know, I think this, this highlights the importance of new commercial growth, you know, in those years where you saw a rebound. You know, certainly one of those was as University Station came online. Do we risk at any point falling below a threshold that would put that split tax rate at risk?
It, it is a moving target every year and depending on new construction, single family homes, you know, this year it was, the last couple of years it's been condos, you know, Abbey Road came on board, four oh one Washington Street, the condos above the muffin man. So each one of those, although it's one project, it adds multiple residential units. So it does change every year and it's something we certainly keep an eye on.
Excuse me, Rob, to your point, University Station, had that not been developed starting back in twenty thirteen and coming online in twenty fifteen, you can just imagine what the percent of commercial we would be at. It would be significantly lower and therefore most definitely more of the tax burden would be on the residential property owners, let alone we wouldn't have the benefit of the tax revenue, the new growth tax revenue that did come in from University Station to support the community and and all the needs that we have through our schools and public safety.
Right.
I just want to interject, excuse me, Rob, then I'll, I'll go back to you. We are going to be taking public comment as this is a public hearing. I do see one comment in the queue, but there is no address listed. So if you are going to submit a comment or a question, please add your address so we can read your comment or question. Thank you, Rob. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, I just, I've had some questions from residents where there was some confusion as to the assessed valuations being twenty five percent higher and they were thinking that their taxes were going up by twenty five percent. You know, the tax levy is governed by Prop two and a half plus new growth and then anything that the community votes on top. And this is, happens to be a year where we have, you know, some significant spending going on with respect to the Pine Hill School. So it's while the, the tack, while the assessed values have accelerated based on, you know, home values, that's why you're seeing the corresponding reduction in the tax rate because you're essentially backing into your, your algebraic formula you were talking about before, right, Mark?
Absolutely correct. I think there was a slide earlier about what the rate would be if it was a single rate, which is again, just taking the total levy, dividing it by total assessed value. Because the denominator there is increasing, the tax rate is decreasing because of the large increases. Yes, this is a function of higher residential values as well as a function of the total levy that needs to be, the total amount of money that needs to be raised.
And if I could just add on to Rob's question from earlier, keeping in mind the increase in value this year, this was our fifth year. It was a full town re-valuation mandated by DOR, Department of Revenue. We're in the off years, it's just incremental increases, but every five years, the state mandates that we do a full revaluation and the last one was done in two thousand and eighteen. Five years later, we just completed one right now. So traditionally on those five year revaluation years, depending on the market, in this market, it's an up market, but you're going to see a higher than previous years increase in value because of the full valuation where the other years are more of incremental changes.
Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, I do want to open this up to public comment. I, I do see one in the queue, but unfortunately there's no address listed with it and we do ask that you please add your address if you are still with us and we'll give it a moment for any other public comment. All right, well, seeing none, oh, let's see. Okay, I have an address now. So we have a comment from Justin Obay, thirty four Briarwood Drive. Westwood already has some of the highest taxes in the area. We cannot be increasing taxes on residents by this much. Our school ratings are plummeting. Didn't we also bring University Ave into Westwood to bring our taxes down? How can you justify increasing tax rates? What additional services is the town providing residents? Seems like everything is just getting worse. We're going to be going into a recession and residents are already experiencing hardships with inflation at all time highs. If a recession comes next year and home values plummet next year, will you also decrease tax rates? Why aren't commercial properties bearing a larger portion of the tax burden? Home values are flat year over year. They have not increased this year. Property sales overall are down fifty percent. Would anyone like to respond to that? There's a lot there.
A lot of, you know, as everyone hears, increases in value. An ongoing problem for the last couple of years has been lack of inventory. There's twelve houses listed in Westwood. Granted, you know, this month of December is usually one of the more quiet months, but there should be double that amount listed for sale right now. And I think if you speak with any realtor, they all have a list of buyers ready, willing, qualified to buy a house, just nothing to show them. And because of the lack of inventory, we've seen the bidding wars and thus the prices have increased. I can't really speak to some of those questions, you know, going into reception. We are always eighteen months behind. If the market does take a turn, the following year it will reflect in the overall values and the tax rate would be adjusted accordingly.
And I think we've answered through the presentation about commercial properties. They are taking on disproportionate burden of the taxes, which helps us keep residential taxes lower than they otherwise would be. So I think it would be worth going back and looking over this slide deck if somebody wants to understand that better. But commercial properties are it's, we don't have a lot of commercial properties in Westwood. We have tried to maximize the value of an important area and we need to continue to pursue redevelopment of older areas to see if we can create new value. But we are, we are primarily a residential community. So the state, as has been said many times before, limits the extent to which we can shift tax burden onto commercial properties. And we're already bumping up against that high end and I think we're doing a very good job at managing this and it, in some ways it is what it is and we, we, we are cognizant of how much of a burden this is, but we have a lot of responsibilities in town and it is a town that is very desirable and people do want to move here. As John said, the inventory isn't there for people to be buying houses right now.
Mark, if you would, wouldn't mind, would you just go back to where you show the, the sort of math of the tax levy being divided by the total valuation of the town? So, you know, where we are talking about home values are flat year over year, Mr. Obey. To John's point, this is an eighteen month lag. So while that may be a true statement, and I don't know, I'm not a realtor, but the, the values that are reflected in the current assessment are part of basically full year, calendar year twenty two. Is that right, John?
Correct.
And then with respect to the total taxes, the taxes are, as I said earlier, a function of the tax levy, which is governed by Prop two and a half plus new growth and then any overrides, whether operational or exempt debt that are voted by the community. And, and this year you have the Pine Hill School coming on. So that's the additional services, you know, the additional desire that the community has voted that are contributing to the taxes overall. But, you know, in terms of the tax rate, because you're taking the levy and dividing it by this significantly higher assessed value, that's why that tax rate has actually dropped.
Correct. And, and they, they operate Correct, and and they they operate the 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 levy and the assessed values operate independently of each other. So every year, um, the levy might be increasing, it might be increasing a smaller amount or a lesser amount from year to year. And the assessed values can be increasing or they can be decreasing. So they they do operate independently of each other, um, and that's to your point earlier. Mr. Gotti, which is just that some of this is, um, it is what it is. And uh, this is the reality that we are are operating under, given where the assessed values are and what the levy is.
And if I could just comment too on on the question regarding University Station. Where you you know, the question was, that was supposed to reduce our taxes. If you recall, we were able to get significant. Projects done within Tac, uh, Prop two and a half because of the new growth. That came from that community, that development. So that was additional services, your 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 library of police station, fire station. All were projects within Prop two and a half. And so those were, did not need to go out for an exempt debt override. So um, I understand where there may be some confusion around that. I hope that helps clarify that for folks.
Okay, we have a couple more comments and then I think we're ready to move this to a vote. Justin Obay wrote back to say, okay, thank you. And Fran Fusco, twenty Pine Lane writes, why are targets taxes going down and mine are going up? I thought University Station would help minimize my tax increase. I think we've, we've addressed that several times tonight with respect to the impact of University Station. And I've also discussed the disproportionate. Uh, taxes uh, being paid by our commercial entities. So with that, oh, I think there's one other question. Allison Drescher, four hundred Gay Street, almost exclusively cash buyers can transact under current interest rates on residential homes. Therefore, sales in Westwood are down fifty percent from the past several years, going from twenty, two hundred per annum to one hundred. Westwood High School has gone from twelve to twenty in the U S World Report ranking. This is an undue burden to the taxpayers of Westwood, higher taxes than Brookline, Wellesley and Newton. Weston lowered residential taxes this year. Is the select board comfortable with this tax increase? Again, um, we are talking about the the shift factor, which is going to shift. The burden. Further on to our commercial entities. Um, and we are going to be voting on that shortly.
Madam Chair, if I could just, um, you know, elaborate too. You know, this treasure cites the the home sales in terms of the number of units being down significantly. And certainly part of that is due to the higher interest rates as the action's been taken by the Fed to sort of cool the. The hot economy. The other part of that, though, is that, you know, fewer people are putting their homes on the market. Because if they sell at this high interest rate environment where where they may be carrying a, uh, you know, a. Two and a half, three percent mortgage, they would need to be buying back in with a higher mortgage. So that has also suppressed inventory available on the market, which has kept values high.
Right, there's one more comment and then I'll entertain a motion. To move this, Fran Fusco, twenty Pine Lane, maybe town could stop overtaxing us the three percent for free cash. Um, with that, I will entertain a motion. Rob, you're on mute.
Forgive me, was toggling screens. All right. I move the select board vote to approve the classification factor of one point seven two. To uh, the fiscal year twenty twenty four and to authorize the Town Administrator's Office to electronically. Sign on our behalf, the notification of the vote to be filed with the Department of Revenue.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call vote, Joe.
Aye.
Rob.
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
And I would further move the select board vote to close the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty four tax classification.
Second.
Roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Rob.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Once again, uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Murphy. Ms. Hyde, uh, Mr. Curran, thank you, all of, all of you, um, for your work and for your presentation tonight.
I think we have to close our meeting.
Yes.
I move that we close the Board of Assessors meeting.
And I second that motion. And roll call vote, Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
And I also vote in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, on our agenda, we have a discussion about the twenty twenty four special town meeting start time. And uh, with us, we have. Let's see, Dottie Powers, our clerk, good evening, Madam Clerk. And I think is Jim, our moderator, uh, Jim O'Sullivan is joining us as well. Hi, Jim.
Hi, everybody. I'm gonna get everything working.
Great, uh, I will turn this over to you, Jim and and Dottie to uh, talk to us about. A proposed start time for the special town meeting on January seventeenth.
Did you want to address that, Jim, or did you want me to address it?
Uh, what, you can start, Dottie.
What we recommend is a start time for town meeting, six thirty and check in will begin at five thirty.
Sounds good to me. Any questions or comments on that?
Point of order, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Dottie, is it going to be in the high school auditorium?
Yes, it will be. Wednesday, January seventeenth.
Excellent.
You ready for a motion, Madam Chair?
I am, thank you.
All right, I would move the select board approve a twenty twenty four special town meeting. Uh, on January seventeenth, twenty twenty four and have a start time of six thirty with check in beginning at five thirty P M.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Rob.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Thank you very much and uh, our next item is a uh, discussion. About uh, possible quorum reduction for the special town meeting on January seventeen, twenty twenty four. And so again, we have Madam Clerk and uh, our moderator, uh, Mr. O'Sullivan.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I I believe Town Council will take the lead on the introduction to the board on this matter.
Excellent, thank you, Pat.
Not a problem. So we've done this at least two, maybe three times since the beginning of COVID. Our current quorum is a hundred and seventy five. Chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty three allows us to reduce the quorum. We've reduced it to forty five twice, which is essentially twenty five percent of the one seventy five. We can't vote on it tonight. The Act requires us to post it for at least seven days. So you can talk about if you want to do this tonight. And we would have to take it up at your December eighteenth meeting if we were going to do that. And it would need to be posted tomorrow morning on the town website. So I guess what we're looking for from you tonight is, is there interest in reducing the quorum? At this point in time.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, what is your feeling on this?
Uh, I hate to correct Town Council, I think we've reduced the quorum five times since COVID. The uh, you're on mute, Pat.
Maybe we have, I I just don't recall doing it five times. And maybe that comes with age, Jim, who knows?
The uh, it it is going to be a January meeting. I'm going to rely on Mr. Pre- Preva Terra, he has a way of controlling blizzards in the winter. But I think we might have a little difficulty. He adding a hundred and seventy five, uh, who knows? I I would like to have the flexibility of having the reduced quorum.
Jim, I think the first time we did it, I had to get a court order to reduce it. The 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 last times we've done it, we've done it via the legislation.
I think that's right, that's right.
And and of course, you know, to lower it is simply um, a a floor, it's not a ceiling.
Correct.
As far as how many people can participate and we want as many folks uh, as can. To participate. At at the same time, we want to make sure that we get the important work of the town done.
And and I think it's important to note that every time we have reduced it, we meet, we've eventually met the quorum. So it's, it's not like the chairman said, it's not a, it's not a ceiling, it's a floor.
Well, I I am comfortable in continuing in that vein, Joe and and Rob.
I'm not opposed to the reduction, Mary Anne.
Pardon me?
I'm not opposed to the reduction.
Nor am I, and I I would encourage everyone to come out. I mean, we are better when we have, you know, broad participation from the community. So as we've said countless times, floor not a ceiling. Everybody join us, please.
So, so we will. Based on, I don't think we need a vote, you're giving us direction that you want us to post. That we're going to discuss at the December eighteenth meeting. Anybody who wants to comment on it at that point in time. Should feel free to attend the Zoom meeting on December eighteenth and let us know your feelings about it. And we can go from there.
Excellent. Thank you, Pat. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
All right, you're welcome. We'll see you on the eighteenth.
Good night.
I'll do my best, Jim.
Oh, oh, December eighteenth and then. Sorry, it's getting late. Okay, uh, we do have some new business, uh, we're going to move on to. The first of which is uh, with respect to uh, M W R A sewer debt. And with us, we have Stephanie McManus. Welcome, Stephanie, and thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Uh, point of order, Madam Chair? Do we need to do anything with respect to the articles before we leave old business?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're you're right, Rob. That's, that's my bad. I apologize, everyone. I missed uh, an agenda item. Thank you, Rob. Uh, this is with respect to the twenty twenty four special town meeting article discussion. Thank you, Rob. And my apologies. Uh, Chris, you are taking us through this.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So um, as the board knows, we've, uh, the board has called for a special town meeting on January seventeenth. We have three articles. That we proposed to the board, uh, Article One being the fire station design and bid funding. At town meet, with the board's prior vote um, for one point four million dollars from Parker Funds contingent upon. Uh, passage at this uh, special town meeting. We are looking uh, for two point one million dollars to complete that uh, funding request for the design bid project. Uh, Article Two is a dead housekeeping article. Um, regarding um, the abandonment of a purchase of a fire multipurpose vehicle. For a total of four hundred thousand dollars, which was authorized um, under Article Twelve. Uh, the annual town meeting warrant of May third of twenty twenty one. And then to transfer those four thousand, the four hundred thousand dollars, excuse me. Borrowed for the purpose of that to pay um, a portions of the cost uh, for the Hanlon School project. Um, I know Stephanie is on, if there's um, any questions regarding. That process um, and any questions uh, regarding that recommendation, we can certainly answer. And in regards to miscellaneous article, um, number one, our recommendation is for the board to remove that. From your special town meeting warrant um, for January seventeenth. If the board wasn't inclined to do that, then we would move forward with the, to the finance committee with those two voted articles.
Thank you, Chris. Um, and Stephanie, perhaps you can just explain to folks how that four hundred thousand dollars that would is. Being proposed to be abandoned uh, for the multipurpose vehicle would be used.
Yes, sure. Um, so we're calling this a a dead housekeeping item because it is just that. We are attempting to um, just clean up that four hundred thousand dollars. It is currently cash uh, sitting with us. And this would just be to abandon a project that it was previously voted for at a town meeting and transferring it. To um, another, uh, another project, it's the Hanlon Construction School project. It would not be adding to the budget of that process, uh, project. It would just be reducing the cost that we would need to borrow for the second portion of that. So it would, the authorization that would be reduced is the eighty four point six million that was authorized. At a previous town meeting in twenty twenty one uh, for that project.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
I have a question. I thought, um, Chris, I thought originally we're talking about using the four hundred thousand dollars. For the cemetery improvement. And then I thought, I asked you about using that funds. Since it was for fire apparatus to put it towards the fire station. Design build thing. And don't, isn't, isn't there something in the works for additional funds coming? Uh, from the M S B A? For the Hanlon, I'm sorry, for the Pine Hill project? Why would we?
All right, and 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 Joe, I can certainly try to address your questions. Uh, that you asked, so as far as the first question. If I'm not mistaken, it was regarding the cemetery, is that correct?
I think that's what you told me, yeah.
Yeah, so we were looking at a variety, we were looking at different projects that were approved for borrowing but not yet borrowed. Completely for, and Stephanie has been working with our financial advisors on that. We had a number of, uh, Stephanie can certainly go into it, but we had a number of discussions regarding different projects and different funding sources for those projects. So when we did evaluate the cemetery and Stephanie gave some of the details of it. One of the things that we did discuss with the financial advisors was the funding source for that project. So the recommendation was not to go forward with that project um, to, for this reallocation. As far as the fire station, um, the design. Um, we, we haven't borrowed for that, so we can't apply. So I don't, I'm I'm a little confused on that one because we haven't authored, we haven't sought out borrowing for the fire station. This can only be applied to something that was previously borrowed or previously previously voted to borrow. And Stephanie, if I missed anything, please.
I will just say, I, yeah, sorry, I will just say um, two points that we went with our financial advisor and bond counsel. It was important to acknowledge that um, this four hundred thousand dollars has a two year spending requirement. Um, that is coming up in May, so we need to apply it to something that can be um, spent before that time. So it couldn't be for a new capital project, it wasn't an option or. You know, buying a new vehicle or anything like that because it wouldn't be procured in time and spent. To deal with the possible arbitrage that comes with that. It also needs to go towards, towards a capital project that could be borrowed for the same term as the original or longer. So that limits what we can do with it and it also um, needs to be, as as Chris mentioned. A project that has been either partially borrowed for. Or banned short term, but it cannot have been completely borrowed long term permanently. So there's, there's a number of restrictions that go into this and this was the best option. And especially working with our financial advisors and bond counsel, they recommended it as well. Does that answer your questions?
But the thumbnail for tomorrow morning at the bus stop is it has to go towards something. The town meeting uh, asked to borrow funds for.
I, I'm sorry, ask that. Again.
So the bus stop answer tomorrow will be, the four hundred thousand dollars has to be applied towards a borrowing. uh action and not towards reducing any other costs or anything.
Well, I think there's a, if I heard Stephanie correctly, Joe, and I I I hear you on the sort of what's the what's the highlight? Yes, it needs to be applied to something that was previously approved at town meeting, and it sounded like there were some spending timing constraints um as well as term constraints that made it, you know, this was the best use of those return for uh those, what's the what's the term that you're calling it here?
I I get it.
And 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 you know, and I think you also asked about the MSBA. I when we got them the sort of news that there's there may be something coming, I tried to, you know, parse through and see if I could figure out just how much, couldn't do it because some of it is dependent on who applies for it and how much qualifies, et cetera, but I'm in favor of using this money and quite frankly, anything we get from the MSBA to reduce the amount that we have to go out and borrow to provide some level of relief to the the resident taxpayer.
And to Rob's point, that's we also highlighted that in this project specifically, as you just saw with the tax check presentation, it is um you know, included in that bucket of raising the tax levy because it's outside Prop two and a half, so anything we can do to reduce that has a direct impact. If not, you know, on the smaller end, it has a direct impact on the tax bills for the next round of borrowing.
Okay, I think I got it. Thank you, Mary Anne.
Hey, Joe, if you if you want, I'll be happy to talk to you tomorrow about following Bond Council's lead on this stuff.
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you, Pat.
Not a problem.
Any other questions or comments from my colleagues?
Madam Chair, we do have one um resident who asked a question or has a statement, excuse me.
I I I see that. I was just about to read that. Thank you, Chris. Um, we do have a comment um on point here from Kathy Wallace, two eighty-three Farm Lane. Um, I would like to thank the select board for calling for the special town meeting on Wednesday, January seventeen, twenty twenty-four. I wholeheartedly endorse this vital fire station one building project. I encourage all residents to access the information that will be available in the coming weeks and to mark their calendars to attend the town meeting and support our firefighters and paramedics by approving the funding for the design bid documents. Um, I do want to add to that uh that the FinCom will be having their public hearing um on uh Wednesday of this week, December sixth at seven PM at the library. Um, and with that, uh, I believe we are
If I could just add one thing to that, just as a reminder to residents, uh, that is requirement per our 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 process for a town meeting or a special town meeting through the Finance and War Commission, they did mail have a mailer that went out to each household um identifying the date of the special town meeting and some descriptions of the three articles uh that were avail or known at that time. Um, so we do with the board support or if the board were to support to withdraw Article Three, then we would only have two of those articles, but we did have something that went out to all the households.
Thank you, Chris. I will entertain a motion.
Okay, hold on one second here. Um. Let's see here. Um, I moved that the select board, do we, do we have uh? So I'm all of the select board um vote to remove Article Three and accept the other two articles as written.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, Joe.
I.
Rob.
Hi.
And I vote I as well. Thank you. Uh, that does now bring us to new business. Um, and to the MWR A sewer debt, uh, which Steph, uh, you are on now. Thank you. Sorry for my jumping the gun earlier. I apologize.
I all gave me a minute to regroup. Thank you. So the town participates in the MWR A I N I Local Financial Assistance Program. Um, it's a great program that our DPW department um is very smart in participating in. Um, they do a number of projects through it. Our eligible MWR A financial assistance totals five hundred thousand dollars. And at the twenty twenty-three annual town meeting, the town um voted to pro- approve an article to pay for the costs of the I and uh infiltration and inflow improvements to the town's wastewater collection system. Um, so the tonight, we're asking the board to vote the approval of the sale of the sewer bond. And the total um amount for this program is five hundred thousand dollars. But the project seventy-five percent of it, which is three hundred and seventy-five thousand, is through a loan portion, and then twenty-five percent, which will be what we're asking you to vote on, is the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which would be in the form of a ten-year no-interest loan with the MWR A. Um, like I said, it's a great program. There's really no downside to it for us. Um that grant, like I said, will be interest-free, and the repayments will be in equal payments over ten years of twelve thousand five hundred dollars beginning in November of twenty twenty-four. Um, and when you do go to to make this vote, I just want to um highlight that you don't need to read the entire language from Bond Counsel, but it has been included in your packet. And then also, um, the documents to be signed can be signed anytime between now and um tomorrow by the close of day. I know it's a tight timeline. The closing for this is December eleventh. We need to get that paperwork in order and um FedEx out before uh that time. So we would appreciate you working with us, and we can um come to you or get anything we need to get that paperwork for the closing documents signed.
And just a point of clarification, the total for the project was five hundred thousand dollars, seventy-five percent of which came in the form of a grant. That was the three seventy-five, which you were talking about, right, Steph? And we're only doing a loan portion for the hundred and twenty-five remaining twenty-five percent.
That is correct. And it's zero interest loan, like I said, over ten years, so.
Okay, thank you, Steph. Uh, any other questions or comments, Joe or Rob? If.
Not for me.
If not, I will entertain a motion.
Okay, I move the select board approve the sale of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar sewer bond to the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, the MWR A, and to adopt the vote prepared by Bond Counsel in connection with the sale of the town sewer bond to the MWR A dated December eleventh, twenty twenty-three. In addition, the full text of the Bond Counsel MWR A vote to be included in the December fourth select twenty twenty-three Select Board Decision Notice and Meeting Minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, Joe.
I.
Rob.
I.
I vote I as well. Uh, thank you.
You. And I just want to thank um the town staff who is heavily involved in this, uh Kathley Foley, our Assistant Town Treasurer, as well as our Town Treasurer, Phil Shapiro, and uh Todd Corchen and Brendan Ryan at DPW, who take great advantage of this program. So thank you to them.
Thank you again, Stephanie. Uh, our next item is uh to open the twenty twenty-four annual town meeting warrant. Uh, Chris, do you want to take us through this, please?
I will do my best and not to confuse anyone.
Right.
Again, for as as Madam Chair said, this is for the annual town meeting that is scheduled for um May of twenty-four. I think I believe it's May sixth, if I'm not mistaken. Um, May sixth, Monday, May sixth, twenty twenty-four. Um, the board in the past has opened the annual town meeting and kept the warrant open until the board's first meeting in January. So we would be asking for the board to vote um to open the annual town meetings, uh, the the twenty twenty-four annual town meeting. Um, and then again, to plan to close that warrant uh or that opening, close the warrant on Jan- the first meeting in January twenty twenty-four, which you're going to be talking about your meeting dates after this agenda item.
Great, thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments?
Not for me.
I will entertain uh the motion on this, Rob.
All right, I move the select board vote to open the town meeting warrant for the twenty twenty-four annual town meeting and indicate our plans to close the warrant at our first meeting in January of twenty twenty-four.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, Joe.
I.
Rob.
Hi.
I vote I as well. Thank you, Chris. And that brings us to a review of twenty twenty-four Select Board meeting dates. There was a calendar uh forwarded uh to members to review. Um, I think uh Tish, maybe you could help us with this. Do we have issues with January and February that we need to nail down?
We initially I don't think you can yell out the audio issues, but we initially had an issue with um either January eighth or January tenth. I'm not sure which date works best for all three members. Would you like to get to stay with the January eighth on Monday? Be consistent.
Um, I personally would
Just to inform the board, that would be the week after New Year's Day.
Right.
The Monday after New Year's Day, excuse me.
I personally would prefer the tenth, but um let me ask my colleagues where you're at on that.
I actually would prefer the eighth only because I have a conflict on the tenth, so.
Sure. Joe, are you good on the eighth?
Um, my social schedule's pretty open that day.
Looks like we have a winner.
By the eighth? Okay. And January twenty-second? Is that fine?
No issue. Be there. January what? Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Fine with me.
Um, I'm kind of free that day, too.
Okay. And then that in February, um, we have it as February fifth and February twenty-sixth.
Sorry, Tish, I didn't hear what you said there.
February sixth and February twenty-sixth. To February fifth, excuse me, February fifth and February twenty-sixth.
Both of those dates are fine for me.
Yeah, I'll definitely be an iffy on the twenty-sixth. I'll certainly uh try my best to zoom in. Should be able to.
I can, I can do both of those.
Okay, and then March? March eleventh and March twenty-fifth.
But just to be clear, March eleventh and March twenty-fifth.
No issues.
I'm fine.
Same here.
Okay. And then to get hearing, April first? April sixteen would be a Tuesday due to
So April first and Tuesday, April, Monday, April first, Tuesday, April sixteenth, and April sixteenth is because um Mon- uh Patriot's Day is on Monday, April fifteenth.
Does that also sort of cascade some of the other meetings typically Planning Board meets on a Tuesday night? Would that be a conflict with them at all, just in terms of, say, Westwood Media Resources?
It it would appear that based on our calendar that the FinCom would be meeting on
No Planning Board, Planning Board.
Oh, Planning Board, um. I do not have the date for that Planning Board in on April, um, but we can certainly double check.
It stays to find with me in April.
Same here.
Chris, you want to go with May?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Um. So we have uh annual town meeting on May sixth. We then we have the Select Board Reorganization Meeting on Monday, May thirteenth, and then uh proposing the next meeting would be Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, which is the day after Memorial Day.
So just a question, um typically in May, I feel like after the town meeting, we have like a a morning meeting to do the reorg, and that's the only order of business. Is that thirteenth meeting a just a reorg, or is that a full meeting? Um, because I I feel like we have typically done the the reorg quickly after to then allow the uh the new chair time to set the agenda for the next meeting. I don't I don't know how all of that is is sort of factored into this and or if we should be even talking about meetings out then because we'll have an election in between, right?
So historically, Rob, um it it most of the time, the reorg meeting is reorg and then a regular selectman's meeting. On on occasion, we've reorg just meant to reorg, but it's not the norm.
Okay, I it maybe that's just in my short time.
Well, Rob, I certainly appreciate your thought about giving the next chair as much time as possible. Certainly.
Okay, um, so do we have clarity on all of that, Tish?
Yes.
Awesome. Great, thank you. Okay, so we can move on um to old business. Uh, this is Westwood Media Center. I'm going to uh recuse myself from this, so I'll turn it over to Rob and Tish. If you could, please let me know when I should come back, please. Thank you.
Rob, you're muted.
Thank you, Steph. As I'm saying, um, as as folks are aware, we have uh as the town negotiated payments from Comcast in license agreements. Um, those funds received by the town are then transferred to Westwood Media Center. Um, our local access television pro uh station that does such a good job of you know, capturing and and broadcasting all of our meetings. Per the agreement, um we agree to transfer these funds within thirty days of receipt. Um, and so we have uh some funds to be transferred. Stephanie, why don't you take us through what those are and the timing of them and the total, and then we can make uh a motion? Now you may be on mute.
Nope, just regrouping. Um. So um for the funds transferred to Western Media Center, um it includes partial funds from Comcast and partial from Verizon. Um, these were all received by the town within the month of November. Sorry, someone, I thought someone
No, that was just me coughing. I apologize.
Um, and the total amount from uh Comcast for this round is forty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. And from Verizon, it's forty thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-eight cents for a total of the eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty six dollars and thirty-two cents. Um, and this is, as Rob already said, per the license agreements um that were signed between Western Media Center and the Select Board.
So I don't have any questions, Rob.
Okay, thank you, Joe. And if if uh you would make the motion, and I will second out of necessity with Mary Anne's recusal.
I'll make the motion that the Select Board approved the transfer of forty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-four cents from Comcast, as well as forty thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-eight cents from Verizon, totaling eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-two cents to Westwood Media Center per the license agreements and the Westwood Media Center agreements signed by the Select Board.
And I will second that out of necessity. Roll call, Joe.
I.
And I vote I as well. Um, Chris, Stephanie, if you guys could let Mary Anne know she can come on back in.
Hey. Thank you very much. Um, our next item of business is the uh our regular meeting minutes from November thirteen, twenty twenty-three. Any edits, uh additions, subtractions? Uh, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move that we end uh approve, excuse me, the regular meeting minutes from November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, as written.
We didn't make Rob read all those different CV licenses and stuff. Coughing now. I'll I'll second the motion.
Uh, roll call, Joe.
I.
Rob.
Hi.
I vote I as well. Uh, that brings us to public and press. Uh, I'm not seeing anything in the queue for the moment. Uh, I'll while just keeping an eye on that, I'll I will mention that our next meeting is Monday, December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at six PM via Zoom. Um, I am-
Madam Chairman, you'll also appear before the FinCom on Wednesday night, will you not?
I will, yes. Uh, I will be before, uh, the FinCom um, on this Wednesday, uh, December sixth, uh, December sixth at seven PM at the library. So we encourage folks uh, to come to that meeting, um, to hear further detail on the special town meeting, um, articles, uh, which we have discussed at length in these meetings, but which will be discussed um, in great length. Um, and I think that will be a, a very, uh, helpful presentation and educational presentation for folks.
And Joe and I will be there to support you, so that'll be a meeting of the select board at the FinCom meeting as well.
Excellent, excellent. Uh, I wasn't sure if you could both attend. That's why I didn't say that. So thank you for adding that. Uh, great. Well, with that, I will, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have just enough air in my lungs left, Joe, to make this final, final motion. I move that we, uh, uh, adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, Joe.
I.
Rob.
Hi.
And I vote I as well. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening, everyone.